Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals of the town of Islay will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 22, 2025, on the following applications that the Times listed or as soon thereafter as they may be reached. At such time, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. And when you hear your name, please come up to the podium and tell us your name and address. Application number 405-25, Hilda Alvarez, Alcantara, Barnaby Alvarez, and Carlos Tinio Taveras. Permission to leave above ground pool having rear yard of 10.2 feet and side yard of 13.9 feet instead of required 14 feet each. Residence A District, north side of New York Avenue, 234.97 feet west of Indiana Avenue, Bay Shore.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hilda Alvarez and my address is 245 New York Avenue, Bay Shore, New York, 11706. Yes.
No comment.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Application number 406-25, Barbara Cornacio, trustee of the Nicholas A Cornacio Descendants Trust. Permission to erect second-story addition leaving floor area ratio of 25.88 percent instead of permitted 25 percent. Residence A District, north side of Cross Road, 75 feet east of Pepperidge Road, Oakdale.
Joseph Narabecky, Joseph Narabecky Architect, on behalf of the owner, 1927 Bergen Street, Belmore, New York. I have a little bit of...
You're not asking for much. You're writing on...
I actually have something prepared.
Any questions from the board?
No question.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? Take a motion, please. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Can I just submit for the record? We have no objection letters.
It's been granted.
It's been granted.
It's been granted.
You could, but we can go the other way.
You can only take defeat from the jaws of victory.
Application number 407-25, Suzette Anglin. Permission to leave above ground pool having side yard of 9.2 feet instead of required 10 feet, driveway onside property line not having required setback of 4 feet, and shed having side yard of 1 foot instead of required 2 feet. Residence B District, west side of Lombardi Boulevard, 380 feet north of Chango Drive, Bay Shore.
Suzette Anglin, 1356 Lombardi Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York, zip code 11706. Hi.
No comment.
Thank you.
Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code Section 68-602, to leave roofed over cellar entrance having side yard of 7 feet instead of required 14 feet, and pool equipment having side yard of 1 foot instead of required 6 feet. Residence A District, west side of Arbor Street, 1,228.25 feet south of Bay Shore Road, West Islip.
Good evening. Christine Fay, Accurate Expediting, 286A Belmonte Avenue, West Battle on New York. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here tonight for request as stated. All inspections were done. Driveway will comply. We feel of granting the variance, there would be no adverse impact on the neighborhood. There'd be no adverse effect on the environment. Benefit cannot be achieved other than by means of a variance. We feel it's not substantial. We'd like the board to consider approving this application.
Okay. Any questions to the board at this time?
No question.
No question. Planning, any comments?
No comment.
You okay with the entrance to the side yard on the entrance?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Is anyone else like to be heard in this matter? Yes, please come up.
I live right next door, 70, Arbor Street, West Islip, New York. My main concern is the neighborhood itself and who will be living in the premises. Prior to this, there have been some tenants that kind of made a bit of a mess for the place. I live right next door, constantly picking up garbage. I'm not a big fan of having people rent or park in the street in a pristine neighborhood like that. I'd like to know if he's an absentee landlord, is that allowable? Prior to the place being vacant lately, I know there's someone living in there, but prior to that, a lot of cars, a lot of garbage, a lot of in and out, a lot of noise, a lot of slamming doors, just not being respectful of the neighborhood. And I don't know who's coming next. It's been very quiet for probably about six months, and I have quite a few neighbors that are just as concerned as me. It's been empty for about... Yeah, a couple of tenants. No, I mean, I don't have a problem with the pool or the fence or the filter, none of that stuff. I'm just, you know, it's quite a quiet neighborhood and I want to keep it that way.
Am I allowed to speak again so I can answer your questions? I live on the other side, Judith Manus, 62 Arbor Street. I'm a neighbor on the other side. He had three rentals in the building. He still has one in a Cape. The top floor is two rooms, a bathroom, and no kitchen. He has three people living there. The main floor, he rented it, and then they built a basement stairway through their, through the walls, and then put the portico on top of it. And it's always been very noisy with the people that were living in the basement. This is rated a one-family zone, and three families were living there, none of which owned the house. The very noisy what? One upstairs in the two bedrooms with no kitchen. No, they were, I spoke to the people that did rent downstairs and they threw them out. Something about town zoning, so they threw them out. The main floor, I don't know what happened. They moved out shortly afterwards. I've called the town on this many times because they did not have a permit to do any of this construction to... Right, right. How do I know somebody's living there now? I was speaking to the tenants. Mm-hmm. Yes. Right. I know the owner because I had to deal with him with a broken fence. No, it's not him because I was there when they, when it was bought, and he's the one I dealt with when the fence was broken and he fixed it. Mayor. His name is Mayor. First. Okay, so Mr. Agarwal purchased the home. He lives there. His license is there. He's up here in front of the board to get an accessory apartment. Inspections were done. Everything was okay. Everything that is existing on the house is permitted. So I believe there's one tenant upstairs. I've never gone up there to see people there, but he lives there himself? Yes. There's nobody in the basement? There's no, there's no apartment in the basement. Prior to him owning it, there must have been problems there. When he purchased it, he fixed it, and that's why we're here. They said six months ago or whatever. So approved for one year? Wait, I can't hear you. Okay. Okay.
I live at 88 Arbor. Carmella Dunn. I live at 88, 82 Arbor, sorry, three houses up, and I concur with everything they said. It's a quiet, pristine neighborhood. When there's tenants there, it's chaos and dirt and filth, so it shouldn't be allowed.
Thank you. For one year, okay. And welcome to inspect whenever, I mean.
Application number 409-25, Esminda Sandoval Flores. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code Section 68-602, and to leave patios having rear and side yards of 1 foot instead of required 4 feet each. Residence B District, southeast corner of Lorraine Street and Winfield Avenue, Brentwood.
Hi, my name's Robert Ramirez, 990 Motor Parkway, Central Islip, New York, 11722.
Pick the microphone up, please, Mr. Ramirez.
Robert Ramirez, 990 Motor Parkway, Central Islip, New York, 11722. I am the agent representing Mrs. Esminda Sandoval Flores. We are asking permission to establish an accessory apartment and also to leave the patio having rear and side yard 1 foot instead of required 4 feet each.
Any questions from the board at this time? Planning, any comments on this?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please. Motion to grant the application for a period of three years and then grant the application. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted. Here to three years.
Thank you so much.
Application number 410-25, Enrique Gateras Osordo and Carmen Gateras. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code Section 68-602, and to leave shed having rear yard of 3.1 feet instead of required 4 feet. Residence B District, southeast corner of Cliff Street and Kenmore Avenue, Central Islip.
Maria Higgy, Victory Expediting &amp; Design, 606 Johnson Avenue, Suite 25, Bohemia, New York, 11716. Good evening. Just here for permission for the apartment and to leave the shed, which is just a little bit short. Thank you.
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter?
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Application number 411-25, John and Renee Sealy. Permission to install in-ground pool leaving side yard of 10 feet instead of required 18 feet. Residence AA District, south side of Lion Crescent, 149.76 feet west of Swenden Grove, Seville.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Amy DeVito, Wood Hall Expediting with offices at 800 Veterans Memorial Highway, Hop Dog, New York. So we are here to propose removing a semi-in-ground pool. That was before this board in 2017, and proposing a in-ground swimming pool, which is 18 feet by 36 feet. We are able to maintain the rear yard setback of 18 feet, but are requesting a 10-foot side yard setback. As you can see from the consideration, configuration of the property, the backyard is shallow, so putting it into the side yard makes the most sense. It's the best place for the pool to go to create the most relaxed setback. I have a grant from 1991 known as 11 Greenbrier Lane. It was Thomas and Francine Selechia, and they were granted a 10-foot side yard setback for a semi-in-ground pool. Greenbrier Avenue is not immediately within the 500-foot radius, but it's just outside of it. I just want to point out, not within 500 feet, that I found. I'm not sure if Nick did. But I just want to point out, Mr. Wexler, that we are removing a semi-in-ground pool that was only 6.4 feet and 5.8 feet from the rear and side yard granted by this board, and we're actually bringing the property into better conformity by removing that pool and erecting this pool. Yes, we did. It came before this board in 2017. There was a CO. You sure did. Well, I'm putting it on the record now.
So to corroborate that, the previous one was granted to leave that existing pool for the life of the pool, so presumably now that the life of that pool is gone, they're trying to propose a new pool in a more conforming location than the previous one was granted at. In 2017, like she was saying. Should be. But yeah, you can actually see the current pool right there in a much less conforming location. As this board often does, it was granted for the life of the pool with an intention that whenever this one does expire, a more conforming pool will come in its place, which they are proposing. Whether or not it's conforming enough is up to you. They are proposing a more conforming pool. Yeah.
Good night.
Application number 412-25, Richard and Lynn Kenny. Permission to leave gazebo 11 by 29, having side yard of 2 feet instead of required 4 feet, pool patio onside property line not having required setback of 6 feet, patio onside property line and driveway onside property line not having required setback of 4 feet each. Residence AA District, west side of Cloverdale Drive, 112.75 feet south of Cloverdale Drive Extension, Oakdale.
Richard Kenny, 18 Cloverdale Drive, Oakdale. Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number 413-25, Michael Ferrari. Permission to erect one-story addition, 29.33 by 28.83, but I understand we're going to amend that, resulting in floor area ratio of 28.7 percent instead of permitted 25 percent. Residence B District, north side of Paul Drive, 268.1 feet east of Lincoln Avenue, Holbrook.
Good evening. Joseph Walker, 270 Ronkonkoma Avenue, Ronkonkoma, New York, agent for the homeowner. This case was before the board earlier in the year, and we were granted a 27.4 percent In the course of planning and developing the plans, it was... Correct. I also, well, the other thing, Mr. Wexler, is that the call says that the addition would be 29.33 by 28.83. That's not correct. It should be actually 40 by 29. Those are the numbers that were submitted to planning and seeking the denial, so I'm not quite sure how the board would like to... The 40 by 29 does reflect the 28.7 percent proposed FAR. Fantastic. Well, the other variances we're going to use as well. That were previously granted, correct.
No comment.
Have a good evening.
Good as amended.
Application number 414-25, Buffalo HMGLC. Permission to erect two-story dwelling leaving floor area ratio of 30 percent instead of permitted 25 percent. Residence B District, west side of Buffalo Avenue, 325 feet south of Orleans Street, Islip.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, William Garberino, 40 Main Street, Seville, New York, for the applicant. I had the pleasure of being before you about two months ago on this application. The call of the meeting said that we were looking for 29 percent FAR rather than 25, which granted, also granted before this board in 2014 was allowing us 30 percent. When the applicant applied for the building permit, they discovered that the plan said 29.9, and when they wrote the denial, they only had 29. So they insisted that we come back here for 0.09 percent of an FAR, even though we had been granted in 2014, 30 percent. So I have nothing else to say. I'll hold it back for questions if anybody has any questions, but you know, I'm a little amused by this.
Are there any questions from the board at this time?
No questions.
Planning, any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Application number 415-25, James Anthony Patron Jr. and Danielle Marie Patron.
Permission to leave shed having 6 feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of the required 20 feet. Residence A District, east side of Ira Place, 191.61 feet south of Renee Drive, Bayport.
Hello, I'm Danielle Patron.
You're speaking to the microphone.
Sorry. Danielle Patron, 393 Ira Place, Bayport, New York, 11705. We recently bought our house and we had put in a pool of which we had someone come out to take a look. When they did come out, we were granted the application for the pool, but they let us know that the shed was actually not the right feet behind the property line. We actually just bought the shed, and we had asked the shed company if we needed any permits, and they said it was, we made sure it was the height and it was small enough that we didn't need a permit. We didn't realize we also needed to move it back. So we are just asking to keep the shed where it is.
Are you able to move the shed?
No, I don't, not that I know of. I mean, it's, I don't think so.
Planning, any comments on this? How tall is the shed?
We made it lower than its, we made it underneath what it is to get a permit. I think it's 10 feet.
How you doing, James Anthony Patron? So the feet, it's 7 feet in height, so they told us that when we bought the shed, that if we had to go 8 feet, we needed a permit for that. So they said if you go 7 feet, which is the shortest ceiling, you don't need a permit for that, and that's the reason why I got that shed, so I didn't need any permits. They never mentioned anything to me that I had to be a certain distance from the fence, and this thing is all wood. I can't move this thing. I have, you know what I mean?
So it's 7 feet high?
It's only 7 feet, yes.
And there's a 6-foot fence in front of it? So it's 1 foot above the fence?
Yeah, correct.
I don't think that's that big of a deal, but do we have any precedent?
It's 1 foot above the fence.
No, usually we don't have precedent for those kinds of things. Really, the concern that was put in, because if they're lower than 6 feet, they can have it 4 feet next to it. That jumps from 4 all the way to 20 the second it goes even an inch above 6 feet, and the purpose for that was whether or not it's screened or not. 7 feet's technically not completely screened, but I also don't think it's really bothering anybody to see that it's a little bit of peeking shed above the fence line.
When did the 20-foot setback come into...
Sometime in the early 20, like sometime around 2012, 2015, I think. Before that, it was 10 feet, I believe.
Right, 2012. I'm just wondering if we're going now ameliorated down to 6 feet. Is that going to be the new?
Only in the, I would only consider it in this case because it's pretty small amount above what would be given 4 feet. So the height of the shed is the only reason I would put that into even consideration. If it was a 10-foot-high shed, I wouldn't really consider that.
See, I see this more as a variance for the height than it is necessarily the setback. You know what I'm saying? Because for sure it would be fine.
They actually could have amended that way. Because it doesn't, it only...
I've also asked all my neighbors and stuff. I went to each one of them, and they all have no problem with it whatsoever. And I also painted it the same color as my house, so it looks nice and stuff.
It's not like an ISE.
Yeah, it's not like an ISE.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this application? It's a little bit... No? Okay. Mrs. Bayport, Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Application's granted.
Thank you so much.
Note the height. Yeah, note the height.
I will.
Application number 416-25, Diana Munoz. Permission to leave awning having side yard of 9.2 feet instead of required 14 feet, and to erect one-story addition, 13.4 by 28.3, leaving floor area ratio of 29.77 percent instead of permitted 25 percent. To leave shed having 8 feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required 20, shed having rear yard of 1 foot instead of required 2 feet, patio having side yard of 1 foot and on rear property line not having required setback of 4 feet each, and driveway having side yard of 2.5 feet instead of required 4 feet. Residence B District, south side of Sherman Street, 82 feet west of Washington Avenue, Brentwood.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Jenna Hernandez. Jenna Hernandez with Dynamic Expediting Services with offices located at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York, agent for the applicant. We are here today to maintain two sheds. The first shed is located in the side yard, but only maintains 8 feet behind the front line of the dwelling. The shed has been there for over 20 years. It is a small shed, approximately 120 square feet, and it does conform to side and rear yard setbacks. The second shed is in the rear of the property, very small as well, only about 64 square feet, and maintains a 1-foot rear yard setback instead of the required 2 feet. This shed has also been there for over 20 years and does conform to the side yard setback. We are also here for the paver patio and driveway. Both have been in existence since 2013. The driveway maintains a side yard of 2.5 instead of the required 4 feet, and the patio maintains a side yard of 1 foot and is on the property line in the rear. And lastly, for the existing items is the awning. The awning maintains a side yard of 9.2 feet instead of the required 14 feet. This is in line with the existing dwelling. This awning was also erected in 2013. And the last item is the proposed one-story addition, which does not require any setback relief, but does bring the FAR to 29.77. The addition is a first-floor addition and about 369 square feet.
Thank you. Any questions from the board at this time? Planning, any comments?
You said the, when was the shed installed?
The first one or the second one?
The one that's 8 feet behind the wall.
That one has been there for about 20 years.
Okay, so it would have been installed at a time when it was only a 10-foot requirement, I believe. How tall is this shed?
10 feet.
Didn't we just lay down a kind of a principle if it's not more than 6 feet?
We may have.
It wasn't that long ago. My memory isn't that bad. But we're only kidding.
I got nothing to really rebut what you're saying here. Yeah, that's, that's not ideal. Yeah, that's, that's not ideal.
That shed may have to go. It'll be moved. We allowed one at six because it was only seven feet in height. And our planning representative made a very compelling argument that it's only a foot above the fence. And it's not as low as 10 feet. If it was 10 feet, that would be right out.
What was the height of this shed?
10 feet.
Okay, so there's a lot of photos of an attached shed, but when I look at the plot plan, it says it's to be removed. So number one, that's what's a little confusing. Did you guys notice that?
Yeah, that's on the other side.
Okay, so, yeah, there's quite a few photos of it. All right, so that's to be removed. Got it. There's three photos of it. And the shed that's eight feet behind the front line will be eight feet after the addition is constructed, right? Yeah, okay. So right now, it's only four feet.
Yes.
Is that the shed that's 10 feet high and it's eight feet behind?
It's the blue shed in the photos. Now we have a little bit of clarity of which it is. It's right here. Yeah, there's a white shed that's attached to the house that's to be removed, so don't look at those photos. After they build this.
I think the 10-foot-high shed's got to comply. The other shed, what's the height of the other shed?
That's the rear yard shed. That's, that's.
Seven feet.
Yeah, that one's plastic. It's this one because of the 10-foot height.
Yeah, I see. The issue here is that one shed. Moving it from eight feet behind the front line of the dwelling to make that comply.
Okay. Move it to 10 feet behind the dwelling, you said?
20.
20.
Right, required 20.
Yeah, Nick, that's why I guess.
What's that?
Can they amend the relief they're requesting? Can we give them something?
Yeah, Nick, that's my next suggestion. Yeah, what year it was built. They said 20 years it's been there, right? It's been there since '05. And in 2012, we changed the separate requirement to 20.
So paying attention?
That's what they're, that's what they're thinking.
So 10 feet then, on the shed?
10 feet instead of 20?
Yeah.
Because it's 20 years old. Is that, I think that's what we heard, right?
10 feet? Is anyone else who'd like to be heard in this matter? No, all right, so. 10 feet, 10 feet. Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we deny so much of the application seeking to leave the shed having eight feet behind the front property line. Is that the one that's 10 feet?
Yes.
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 And that, what did we say, 10 feet?
10 feet behind the front line of the dwelling.
So it's two feet, that's our big compromise?
Yes. You want to keep the precedent.
Yeah, but that was seven foot.
No, no, but that one was kind of new.
This is put here for 20 years.
So deny so much of the application seeking to leave the eight foot, or the 10-foot shed eight foot behind the property line and require it to be 10 feet behind the property line and grant remain of the application.
It's 10 feet behind the front line of the dwelling.
Of the dwelling, yes.
You got a second on that? I got a second. All in favor? Application is granted as noted.
Give me one second. Okay, got it. Application number 417-25, Juan Martinez. Permission to leave one-story addition, 11.9 by 15.2, and roofed over deck having floor area ratio of 34.98 percent instead of permitted 25 percent. Shed having side yard of 2.6 feet and rear yard of two feet instead of required four feet each. Pool patio having rear yard of 0.9 feet and side yard of one foot instead of required six feet each. Patio having side yard of 0.9 feet and patio having side yard of 1.6 feet instead of required four feet each. And rear yard landscaping of 31 percent instead of required 40 percent. Residence B District, east side of Thompson Drive, 225 feet south of Diamond Street, Bayshore.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Jenna Hernandez with Dynamic Expediting Services with offices located at 231 Islip Avenue, Islip, New York, agent for the applicant. We are here today to maintain a shed. The shed is 166 square feet, maintains a side yard of 2 feet 6 inches and rear yard of 2 feet instead of the required 4 feet.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Yes.
Our last application, you made a big deal about sheds. This is the new application. Help us with 34.9 percent FAR.
So the breakdown of the FAR, including the dwelling, which is the first and second floor, the front porch, and the rear addition come to an FAR of 31.53, which is in line with the nature and character of the neighborhood and previous grants. When the rear covered deck is added to the FAR, it brings it to 34.98 percent. We have spoken to the property owner and asked. So there was. So there was none at 34, but I have a few applications. There was application 342-02 that granted a 35.6 percent FAR. 846-05, which granted a 32.3 percent FAR. 113-90, which granted a 31.4 percent FAR. 571-13, which granted a 28 percent FAR. And 430-00, which granted a 28.3 percent FAR. 342-02, 35.6.
Yeah, that was, that was denied as submitted. It was granted 32 percent.
I'm sorry? So we spoke to the property owner. They said they would agree to never enclose that area if the. That's the one? Yes. They would agree, they agreed to remove it. Sorry. Yes.
Yeah, there's two cases, one at 32 and one at 33. So 31 point, whatever that decimal is, would seem to be reasonably in line with previous grants.
Thank you.
Application number 418-25, Globus Solutions Inc. and Musa Home Inc. Permission to erect two-story dwelling on lot having width of 100 feet instead of one required 150 feet, an area of 19,483 square feet instead of required 40,000 square feet, leaving front yard of 45.1 feet instead of required 50 feet. Side yards of 18.2 feet and 19.6 feet instead of required 25 feet each, and total side yards of 37.8 feet instead of required 60 feet. Residence AAA District, west side of South Montgomery Avenue, 300 feet south of Montauk Highway, Bayshore.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Sinclair, architect, Double KS Architecture Studio, 86 West End Street, Air Park. Just a little background on this job. This was before the Board back in 28, I'm sorry, 24, December in 2024, in regards to the side yard setbacks, which was approved by the Board and proceeded to be permitted by the Building Department. During construction, a client here decided they found some issues with the structure, so they erroneously removed the house. So as a result, we have to file a new application for a new house, which as a result requires these, these variances for the front yard, the lot area, and the, and the side setbacks.
I do, yeah. So as he was saying, this was, in essence, heard very recently for additions at the exact setbacks that are being requested here. As far as I can tell, at some point, this became, instead of just additions on existing houses, became a rebuild of the dwelling. So this scope has changed. The setbacks being requested are identical to what's been granted very recently. And everything else about this, the lot area, the lot width, obviously, that's all existing. This is an area that's zone AAA, all of these houses here, and similar to this, there's actually quite a few with substandard side yards because they're all really sized more for AA rather than AAA. And that was the argument at the time as well. So really, at least as far as I can tell, this is basically rehearing something where the context has changed, where it's a bigger project than they initially intended it to be. To the best of my knowledge, yeah. Is it a complete, like, demo rebuild, or?
Well, it's the exact same house that was approved by the Building Department, so it's reframed exactly how it was for the approved plans, but, you know, with new framing. Everything is the same. Everything remains the same. The framing, the layouts, everything is the same.
Which is what I thought, yeah. Thank you.
Well, good night.
Application number 419-25, Vincent and Nicole Hartman. Permission to erect second-story addition with roofed over deck and patio, leaving side yard of 18.17 feet instead of required 25 feet, total side yards of 54.27 feet instead of required 60 feet, and to use dwelling for two-family family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code Section 68-419.1. Residence AAA District, north side of Atlantic Place, 512.68 feet east of Lincoln Boulevard, Hopak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Angel Aponte, 1330 Washington Avenue, Bayshore, New York, as the agent for the owners.
I'm Vincent Hartman, 277 Atlantic Place in Hopak.
Susan Hartman, 277 Atlantic Place in Hopak.
We are here requesting a variance for a side yard setback, and I wanted to correct the call. It sounds a little confusing to me. It is a one-story rear addition with a partial roofed over deck above. Part of that deck is roofed over, part is not. But it just sounds like only the second floor is being added to it, so that's not correct. The setback that we're requiring, the setback variance that we're requiring, that 18.17, is to a roofed over first-story patio off the back of the addition where 25 feet is required. That variance also is in tandem with the, the, the two side yard setbacks of, would leave it at 54.27 instead of 60 feet, which would, both of them would be 27 percent relaxation on the side yard setback and a 10 percent relaxation on the aggregate. That's what I was looking for. And then, of course, we're asking for the two-family family use, which we have provided doctor's note as well as two notes from adjacent neighbors in agreeance with the project.
Zoning didn't write up the one-story addition because in their mind, it didn't require a variance. So unless it's in line with the non-conforming side yard, we can leave it out and it'll, it'll be fine. Because they purposely didn't write it. I agree with you that it should be in the public notice, just so the public notice accurately reflects what's proposed, but they see it a little differently. If it doesn't need a variance, they, they're silent on it.
No problem.
All right, so we're good with the call then?
I think so.
Okay. Anything else you want to present at this time?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Planning, any comments on this? What is the setback to the second-story deck?
That's why I wanted to correct that because the first-floor addition has a covered patio off the back.
Right, I see that, and that's what's being measured to 18.17.
Yes, sir.
Then it says proposed open deck above first-floor addition, where it's pointing to something that, it doesn't look to me that it's probably conforming because the corner of the house is currently not conforming.
That, that has nothing to do, it is conforming that part of the project.
So then the cover over the one, that, you're saying that that doesn't comply with 25?
Correct.
But nobody called that out on the plot plan, so, okay.
Is that 24.9?
I'm sorry?
Is that the 24.9?
No, that's the existing corner.
That's the existing.
The two-family, two-family use is fine. That's, everything's in the, everything is in the folder that's needed for two-family use.
So zoning, because the plot plan didn't indicate that there was going to be a substandard feature of the house at that location, zoning didn't look too carefully at your plan. And so, is it a roof deck?
Partially.
Okay. So it's a roof deck with a cover over it?
Say it again.
It's a roof deck that in addition has a cover over it?
So part of it's roofed over, but also it's on the roof of the first story. That's what's happening?
Have any idea what the dimension might be?
So the first story.
Correct.
There's a deck over the whole entire first story.
Correct.
Part of that has a roof over.
Okay.
And then the roof over patio that has the issue with the setback is on the first floor level.
I think that's where you, I think, I think the second-story deck is also at issue here.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm pretty sure it needs a 25-foot setback, and it definitely doesn't have that. It's not 18.17. You are measuring, or they were measuring, to the roof over patio in that case. That's correct.
Okay.
But the house is currently holding 24.9, and it's an angle, so the deck has got to be less than what the house currently is.
So that portion as well?
I believe so. I just don't know what that number is.
Any idea, Andrew?
I filed the worst-case scenario, which was the 18.17.
Yeah, but that doesn't, it doesn't reflect.
I'm looking at the survey, and why doesn't it have dimensions on the structure? I don't see something. Usually it adds those little numbers and.
I put it on, the set of plans has all that information.
So what's, and you're visual. I would say this is the distance we need.
We have to.
So I would say it's halfway between 25 and 18.
Second floor was that, is it like half the width of the house?
Yeah, 25 and 18.
So that'd be about 26 feet.
No, I'm getting about 21.
And how far out does it go?
That's 25, and you see these lines are converging, right? That's 18, so if it's halfway along the convergence between 25 and 18, it would be, you know, three and a half feet less than that.
Why don't they pull it out?
Because they're not smart. Because they're not smart.
Yeah, you know, we're trying to use differential calculus to figure this out. We shouldn't have it. The surveys would say this is the size of the structure. We're guessing. Who is your survey?
It's not the survey, it's the person who drew the plot plan.
Okay. Why don't, I think Mr. Nicole has a good idea. Can we go back and fill in some numbers? We like numbers.
Okay.
This way we know, so we're not guessing.
Give you an adjournment?
And specifically, where would you like the numbers to?
How long would you need for an adjournment?
A couple days, I mean, when your next hearing, I guess?
Well, the next hearing has to be advertised by the end of the day tomorrow, so.
Whatever's more convenient for you guys.
So after August fifth, we have, what, the twenty?
Twenty-six, right?
Twenty-sixth, August twenty-sixth?
Okay.
All right. Does anyone else would like to be heard in this matter?
And if you have an elevation of the side of the house, the board, I think, is very curious about what what this this whole wall projection into the yard is going to look like from the neighbor's side?
Not with me, no. But I can bring it, I can bring full elevations next time.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn it to August twenty-sixth. All in favor?
Thank you.
Application number four twenty dash twenty-five, Connor Christofel. Permission to erect two-story dwelling, leaving floor-area ratio of thirty percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Residence A District, west side of Bellevue Road, two hundred and twenty-five feet south of Russell Road, Oakdale.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Michael Dunn, architect, at two fifty-six Orinoco Drive in Bright Waters, New York, one one seven one eight. So we are proposing a new two-story house on this empty lot in Oakdale. It is in a flood zone, it's in an AE five flood zone. It loops around just a little bit, so part of that property is in the flood zone. So we do plan to lift the house just enough to meet the FEMA guidelines of the FEMA plus-two, so we're going up to seven point five for the first floor. We're asking for thirty percent, but no other setback issues, and we have grading and drainage kind of worked out already, and I don't see any issues with that.
So I know I spoke with you about this earlier today, and you obviously did the calculations since then, although the thirty percent is, obviously, it's something the board will give very often. My concern is with the grading and drainage. It's possible that it might trigger another variance request if they have, you know, compensating, obviously, you don't believe that it will be necessary. I don't expect, you probably had time to review that with engineering at this point, though.
Yeah, we did a lot of engineering work already. We have the drainage, if you look on the plot plan.
With our time of Isletown Engineering Department?
We have the drainage laid out already, and the grading will only come up about one foot and matches the pitch on the side. So if you look on that plot plan, it's pretty well-developed with minimal fill, and I think the cut and fill will be real close to balanced. Oh, it's at elevation seven point five. I do have a, maybe it's an updated site plan that I could drop off. Excuse me? Okay, yes, so I do have an updated site plan. No.
He doesn't believe he does, which he very well might be correct, but.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marissa Grunert. I'm the owner of the property next door at one forty-eight Balfourio Road. I just wanted my concerning question on the record. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, there were several sinkholes that appeared on that property that caused flooding of that property as well as onto my property. I just wanted to know if this is something that the building inspector would be made aware of?
That typically comes in for after plan review, so it would go to the building department through zoning, and we got, and then building department and site engineering review. So that comes when we submit the whole package. And that happens, and we would have to provide enough drainage for the house and the driveway and any impervious materials.
Also, up until, even when we bought the house, the, that spare lot had our address, we're one forty-eight, and that was listed at one forty-eight A. Is that no longer the case? Is that completely separate from my property at this point? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
No, just that we would comply with all the engineering rules and FEMA guidelines and accommodate. I could, yeah. Right. Can I drop this one off right now? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good evening. Louis Giacchione, Waxstef Lane, West Islet. We saw the site friend of the one that was just on. Pardon? I didn't get up fast enough, sorry. No, no, I just had a question about the survey, if it was included, the one that was just handed to you, if it was the same survey that was in the application that we saw. Yeah, please. Thank you.
Hold on, where am I? Delilah Realty. Application number four twenty-one dash twenty-five, Delilah Realty Co., LLC. Permission to install two public interest signs having sign area of thirteen point one seven square feet and twenty-four point four square feet instead of permitted three square feet each, and height of twelve point eight nine feet and eighteen point three three feet instead of permitted ten feet each, with one sign not visible from Main Theraphere. Business One District, south side of Union Boulevard, eight hundred and eighty-six point three five feet west of Pete Lane, West Islet.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Ream with an office at two seventy-five Broad Hollow Road, Suite one hundred, Melville, New York. I'm here on behalf of the tenant Savers, new tenant in within this space. Savers is a big company, and they have a donation center. So we're seeking approval to add two donation signs in order to help facilitate and make the process for donations for people easier as it's around the corner. So the front, first sign in the north elevation, it's a little under twelve point five square feet, very small, just has an arrow pointing where the donation center is. And then the second on the west elevation, actually where the donation center is, with a sign above it, and a square footage of twenty-four square feet. The height, just for the residents to see when they're coming in. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, it's, it looks more substantial than it actually really is. As you can see here on the, on the architectural elevations, it does not look big on the building. Public interest signs just are kept at three feet regardless of what they're actually on. And we would like people to be able to see them from the parking lot in order to be directed towards the donation center.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Application number four twenty-two dash twenty-five, Melissa A. Derivicable Trust. Permission to erect seconds, oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody to be heard on that application? We've had a request for an adjournment, four twenty-two dash twenty-five. We've had a request from the attorney after speaking with Nick for an adjournment. It'll be the first adjournment of the case, and we'd like it to be an open adjournment, if that's okay.
All right, so make a motion for an adjournment?
Motion for an adjournment.
All in favor? All right, open adjournment.
Application number four twenty-three dash twenty-five, Christopher M. Cox. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isletown Code Section sixty-eight dash six oh two on lot not having required width of seventy-five feet. To erect detached garage, twenty-five by forty, not having twenty feet behind the front line of the dwelling. To leave shed number one, having sixteen point five feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required twenty feet. And shed number two, having side yard of three point four feet instead of required four feet, not having twenty feet behind the front line of the dwelling. Carport not having twenty feet behind the front line of the dwelling. Trellis having side yard of six point four feet instead of required ten feet. Pool patio having side yard of five point five feet instead of required six feet. And driveway having side yard of two feet instead of required four feet. Residence AA District, west side of Edgewater Avenue, two thousand six hundred and seventy-four point eight four feet south of Middle Road, Bayport.
Good evening. Christopher Ang, eighty-three, East Main Street, Badog. The, the case that's before you, the, the existing items are the, the sheds, the carport, and also the, the roofed-over area near the pool. The, the setbacks that we're asking for, we, we feel they're, you know, are not that great, they're hopefully minimists to the board. As far as the proposed work, the accessory apartment, we're gonna, it's going to be the right square footage and have all the, have all the requirements that will be required by, by, by the, by the building department for the accessory apartment. As far as the, the proposed garage, it, the call, the call to hearing has it in the front yard, and it is in front of the dwelling. The, the lot is a, it's a flag lot, but the, the actual entry comes in from the side, and the, the front door faces north, so we're looking at the property as, as if the, the front yard is in front of the existing dwelling, north of, of, of the dwelling. So that's why the call to hearing actually says front yard setback. But I'd like to point out to the board that the, the access is from Edgewater Avenue, and the garage is, I would estimate it's probably around two hundred and fifty feet away from Edgewater Avenue, so it won't be visible from the street. And as far as the, the carport as well, I would estimate that to be around two hundred feet away from the entry of Edgewater Avenue. So both of these items, they are in the front yard, but they would not be visible from Edgewater Avenue, which is the, the street. Uh-huh? Correct. Yes. That's correct, and there's, there's a lot of bamboo there, and the, the garage that we're building will not be visible. It's, it's actually in the front yard, so the, the garage by code should be twenty feet behind the front of the structure. But the I'd, I'd like to point out that we're, we're maintaining the required setback to that property line. So it's ten, it's ten feet to the property line, and that's what, that's what's required. What we're, what we're, that's correct. No, no, it's, it's a ten-foot setback to, for the garage, and we're maintaining that setback. The, what we're asking for is that the, the garage be in the front yard instead of twenty feet behind the structure. Yeah. Correct. Let me, hold on, let me just make sure I clarify this, hold on. Where do you see the twenty point eight, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what was the question? On the dwelling? This is rez double A, right?
Eighteen, yes, so we're, we're required to have eighteen. Okay.
Detached garage needs a side yard of ten feet, which they're currently holding exactly as proposed. It's, it's only asking for the proposed garage for behind the front line. As he was trying to explain, it's, it's kind of complicated. It's only an issue because of the flag lot. If this was fronting on Edgewater in a non-flag lot capacity, this wouldn't even be in question. It would be in a conforming location, most likely. But because the flag lot is northeast of them, rather than just due east towards the road, it kind of ends up in the front yard as sort of a and, I really, it's very complicated to explain, but there's a weird angle there, and it shouldn't really be at issue, but it is because of the flag lot. Thank you.
Application number fourteen dash twenty-five, adjourned from January seven, twenty twenty-five, and May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Daniel Bravo and Sandra Reyes. Permission to erect two-story dwelling with cellar entrance and roofed-over porch, leaving front yard of twenty-nine point five feet instead of required forty feet. Second front yard of twenty-five feet instead of required thirty feet. On lot having area of fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-seven square feet instead of required twenty thousand square feet. An effective lot area of thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four square feet instead of required twenty thousand square feet. Residence AA District, southeast corner of Ridgewood Avenue and Commercial Boulevard, Brentwood.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Kathleen McHenry, Long Island Permits, P.O. Box five, Center, Mauritius, New York, one one nine three four.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Bravo, from, I live in, in the, uh, seventeen Open Avenue in Bayport, New York, one one seven one three.
This is a follow-up case, as you said, to the January seventh, twenty twenty-five hearing, and I would like those minutes entered into the record. At this time, we would, excuse me, respectfully request to amend the application to reflect the survey that was emailed over to Ms. Bissaro and Mr. Barbarella on seven seventeen twenty-five. We have reduced the dimensions of the home from twenty-eight by fifty-five to twenty point two by fifty-five. We have shifted the house over to the east, giving us a side yard setback of the minimum eighteen feet and utilizing the lot as best we can. In addition, we have removed the four by nine point five bump out, out on Ridgewood, which will leave us a front yard setback of forty feet on Ridgewood, with the proposed front porch then being with the proposed front porch then being considered an allowable encroachment. With this amendment, we have removed the front yard variance request on Ridgewood. We are maintaining a 25-foot second front yard on this through lot, which, as the Board discussed at the January 7 hearing, 25 feet has been granted in unique lots such as this one. My client has done everything possible to accommodate the Board's request for a more reasonable application. Again, and for the record, we have filed with the Health. All fees have been paid, and Health approval has been issued. It is our belief that the proposed amended plan is not only tasteful and appropriate for the neighborhood, but does best achieve the goal of making the home fit the lot as the Board had previously mentioned. If this application were granted, we believe it would have no negative impact on the community and would be keeping with the nature and characteristics of the surrounding properties. I welcome any questions the Board may have. Correct.
Yeah, so this is, obviously, has been worked on quite a bit since its initial hearing. At this point, all they're asking for is the second front yard of 25 instead of 30, which is only because this is a very odd corner lot. If that was their actual rear yard, that would be conforming. And then lot area as it exists, which they are given a pretty difficult situation here with a very large right-of-way taking a lot of land that would, under most circumstances, be part of their lot. And that 25 feet instead of 30 is only at the corner because of the way that the property sort of angles. So at this point, I think it's a very reasonable application.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Application number 424-25, Aurora Carlton LLC, 263 Carlton Avenue LLC. Permission to erect medical office building leaving front yard of 70.67 feet instead of required 100 feet. To erect three-story apartment building leaving height of 40 feet instead of permitted 35 feet. To convert two existing buildings for use as apartment buildings leaving front yard of 54.4 feet and 53.6 feet instead of required 75 feet each. Planned Development District dash multifamily, Planned Development District dash office, West Side of Carlton Avenue, 285.87 feet south of South Research Place, Central Islet.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is William Duffy. I'm appearing off counsel to Stephen LaScuatro of 494 Route 25A, Rocky Point, attorney for the applicant, and I also have with me the project engineer.
Tony Zalek with JR Holtzmark are consulting engineers, 3555 Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite A, Ronconcombe, New York.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
I understand this has already been through planning?
Yes.
Can you tell us about that and what would the-
This portion you're looking at right now is Phase Two and Three of the project. The overall site is over 13 acres, and the Phase One portion on the furthest northerly end at the intersection of South Research Place and Carlton Avenue is the Aldi. That's now built, constructed, CO, and in operation. The Phase Two and Phase Three is the middle portion of the site, which is multifamily residential, PDD MF. The southerly end of the site is an individual parcel with a planned medical building, so that's PDD Office. So the variances that you're looking for are associated with the southerly parcel for the medical, the new proposed building, which is 188 feet deep for the parcel length. There's 100-foot setback in the front yard, and the building will partially reside in that front yard. The middle portion or the Phase Two portion of the site for the PDD MF has three existing, they are referred to as cottages, but they really are old buildings from CI Psychiatric Center that were used by the doctors, and now they're going to be converted into buildings for disabled vets and autistic teens. To the best of my knowledge, that's the intention right now. Those three buildings, one that's setback further off of Carlton Avenue, the two buildings that are, that are closer to Carlton Avenue, existing buildings from the 1920s, and the setback line that's, runs right through the middle of those buildings now is really what the variance request for is as well. So the two variance requests are for the front yard setbacks. The third request is for the proposed height of the new apartment building that's also going to be on that middle parcel. So the apartment building is going to be greater than the 35-foot height. The parapet area, far on the top of the building, is going to be 40 feet tall. We do have a supplemental plan for you that might help you visualize, because I don't believe it was presented in this application, but it might help you a bit. I think Bill has six copies for each of the Board members. Correct.
As you see from the elevations that are being passed out here, the, the parapets will give the illusion of a, a slanted roof instead of, I know, hide the mechanicals on the top of the building. This is a three-story apartment building with the first floor being off-street parking, and then two, two floors of housing.
The new apartment building is 106 units. The three separate cottages are each eight units, four on the bottom floor, four on the second floor.
Yeah, so I would agree with pretty much everything that they said there. The setbacks for the existing structures are, again, existing setbacks, and we're trying to preserve those structures. They are historic cottages, as was mentioned. The medical building, it's one-story, and by having it in that location, we actually can locate the parking more so behind the building as opposed to in front. This is a site design choice. It was done very intentionally because we would prefer to have more landscaping around Carlton Avenue. As far as the building height, they have sort of a parking area underneath on the ground floor of that building, which needs a bit of a higher roof. And then they also have the screen, the roof is also acting as a screen and sound attenuation for the mechanical equipment. Between those two things, they do need the bit of extra height. We quite like having the parking garage on the ground floor. It screens that area, again, from Carlton Avenue, also allows for more landscaping. It kind of keeps the, the character of the area, the old campus feel. So these were all site design choices that were done very intentionally, and planning does support the application as presented.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Application number 425-25, Lilian Cabrera-Saldana and Pedro Carrion Chavez. Permission to reconstruct two-story barn having height of 20 feet instead of permitted 14 feet and gross floor area exceeding ground floor area of dwelling. To leave shed and chicken coop, all not having required 20 feet behind the front line of the dwelling, and to leave chicken run on side property line not having a required setback of 10 feet. Residence AAA District, West Side of Deer Path Road, 750 feet south of Sportsman's Street, Central Islet.
Good evening. My name is Robert Carrion, son of Lilian Cabrera and Pedro Carrion. I'm here to translate for them, and they reside at 32 Deer Path Road, Central Islet, New York, 11729. No, not yet. Not yet. So my mom wants to say is if, oh, my mom wants to ask if, is there any possibility for the barn being approved now that the DEC has approved everything on the property?
Sure, so it's reconstructing what was an existing CO'd barn. This was before the Board of Appeals back in 88. At the time, there was DEC issues. It took them many years, I think 14 years, but eventually they did get that barn CO'd in 2002 at 20 feet in height, which at the time would have been conforming. Or rather, it was allowed at 18, but we measured it differently. The point is, it's at the same height that it was CO'd at. Now they're trying to reconstruct it, it became dilapidated. Nowadays, it doesn't really conform. Reconstruction does not necessarily get the previous grant slash CO to allow it to be this height, but again, it is a reconstruction of a previously existing legal CO'd structure. Now that the DEC matters have been resolved, which I have the letter from them indicating that they have no issue, it's, seems to be okay to me. Thank you. I'm sorry?
It's done, we just have 13 accessory apartments to renew for a period of three years.
Motion. Second, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
I think that gave you the second, Tom.
Okay, fine, give me the second.